It's 5:30. I want to thank everybody for coming this evening. Let's begin by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
There are no city licenses to approve this evening. We do have one appointment. That is to the Park Board. And we received one applicant from that, Mr. Alex Moore. Therefore, I would make a motion then to appoint Alex Moore to the Park Board for a three-year term. Is that it, Kelly?
Three years.
Three-year term.
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor then, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Are there any amendments to the agenda that we need to look at? Adding by any chance? Gary, do you have anything? Leonard, do you have anything?
Did we have? Did you have an email?
Yeah, there was.
Come through that we needed on the agenda?
We just got it under reports.
Oh, okay, under reports.
Okay, we can do that. Okay. There will be three executive sessions. One will be on non-elected personnel, one will be on turn of clinic privilege, the other one will be on acquisition of property, real property. So those will occur at the end of the meeting. Okay? All right, so we are ready then for the adoption of the consent agenda. Anybody have any thoughts or comments on the consent agenda?
I'd like to discuss items E and H.
E and H. Okay. E and H. All right. Leonard, anything for you?
No, those are fine.
Okay. All right. Then we would need a motion then to approve items under the consent agenda, items A, B, C, D, F, and G.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so let's take E first because we're ready for items for the commission action. Your thoughts on this, Gary?
Just wondering if either of you gentlemen are planning to be there. I'd love to participate in this discussion. I wasn't sure what you guys were thinking, whether we need to make it.
I had planned, you're sort of bringing up whether or not we need to make it a meeting. Is that your thought?
Yeah.
Yes, I had planned to attend. If my schedule will allow right now, it would be tight for me to make it. Leonard, were you?
Yes, I was planning to attend also.
Okay, great.
So we probably ought to schedule a...
It's a special meeting.
Yeah, a special meeting. That way we can make comments and participate.
Yeah, I would like to do that.
Good thought.
Do you know what the hours are at the meeting?
Yes, here, I'll tell you.
Because if it's a special meeting, does somebody need to be here to?
Yeah, I have. Here, I'll tell you. That's the 22nd, all right. Must be in my... For some reason, I thought it was 5:30 to 7:30.
So it's in the evening?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it is in the evening.
The email didn't have anything.
Yeah, I'll get the time and we'll get on the special meeting notes.
Okay, great, all right. So then we need to make a motion, let's just make it official, that February 22nd will be a special meeting for the MAC strategic planning session.
I'll second.
Okay. Any comments, Leonard?
No.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Then item H is next.
Before you move on, you did just set a special meeting, but you haven't decided whether you are cosponsoring. And that was what the item is, is to consider cosponsoring it.
We would need a motion then to cosponsor. Thanks for bringing that up, Jan. Would there be a motion to cosponsor that?
I'll make a motion. We cosponsor the Montgomery County Action Council Economic Development Strategic Plan for February 22nd.
Second.
I'll second.
Second. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So we've got that taken care of. Item H then is considered bids received for the purchase of a dump truck and related equipment for the street department. Your thoughts on that one, Gary?
Just wondering, is there not anybody else we can get bids from besides just one dealer? I don't know. I don't know how that goes.
I was saying, there's Romans, too.
We did solicit others and these are the only ones that submitted?
We stayed in town.
Okay, all right. So Romans chose not to bid for whatever reason. They don't, either don't have it available or...
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, just wanted to make sure on that.
Other questions? It is unusual to see a 2017 model that is cheaper, as you can see, than the 2016 model.
Right.
You might explain that, Mike.
Well, the 2017 has more incentives on it, but the 2016 is a truck from another dealer with a bed on it already. Then they would have to take it and modify the hydraulics and PTO for our equipment, the rest of the equipment. And that's where we run into the price increase.
That's roughly...
It's about $12,000.
Twelve thousand six less. That's a significant amount.
It is.
Your newer truck, basically, I guess.
Yeah, new's new, though. Warranty's the same.
Further questions?
Not relating to the truck.
Okay. Then we entertain a motion then to approve the little bid from Quality Motors for $70,385.90.
So moved.
Would there be a second?
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
All right. Moving on to item I, consider amending the previously approved 2017 agreement with AWOL. This is a subject that we discussed at our last meeting.
Keeping in mind the concern that we have with changing the budget this year and knowing that AWOL was unaware of the amount of maintenance budget that we had, what I did was when I sat down with them and said, "We have $5,000 budgeted for maintenance and they heard your concerns about changing the budget." So what I offered was, if you'd like to take part of that in cash, just be willing to reduce your maintenance budget by that. So we agreed to provide an additional $200 a month and change their maintenance budget to $2,600. But on top of that, what we did was send our maintenance person from Building D over there to go fix some things for him, which he was able to do very inexpensively. And I think we're going to just open those lines of communication and we'd be more than willing to have cities to have go check out some of the things that they have going on. The other thing I'm recommending to you is that we do no longer charge them for water sewer services. They're not paying for sanitation right now, so this would make all of the city utilities at no cost to them, as long as their usage doesn't significantly increase. We hope they won't leave a faucet on now that they're not paying for it. But we thought that this was something that their board would agree to and would help with their needs right now and that you guys might also be willing to agree to since it doesn't change the budget.
Also, might be a good idea for them to make sure that they submit some sort of letter or come available during a budget process so that...
Yeah.
You know...
I'm certain, I mean, based on the requests that we've seen before, it was more significant than this, so I'm sure you'll see them back at budget time. But this should get us through 2017 and give them a comfort level that they can do what they need to do to provide the services they offer right now.
Okay. And so they're good with the agreement?
Karen, who we met with, was good with it, and she felt like her board would approve it.
Questions?
When we go through budget, the groups that we're helping support, like AWOL, the museum, the library, the first year, all of them were invited to come make a presentation. And if we would start inviting them when we're going through the budget process, maybe we could avoid misunderstanding or...
Agreed.
You know, just offer it to them and at least get a response that if they don't care to come and present, then at least we've made the offer and we can stay a little more in touch with our groups.
Agreed. And we do plan to invite them this year to come speak.
Other thoughts? Okay. We need a motion then to approve the new agreement with AWOL for the 2017 budget year.
I make a motion that we approve the 2017 agreement with AWOL.
I'll second.
All those in favor then, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Item J is consider an engineering agreement with Trans Systems for the CLINK, the Penn from Chestnut to Oak project.
Yes, this is the 2017 CLINK project we discussed the last meeting. You know, we were waiting to see if the CLINK program continued. It did not, so KDOT recommended that this project be completed. And this is the engineering agreement for those.
I had some questions on the agreement. In the letter of agreement, your proposal is based on an hourly fee.
Correct.
And in the same paragraph, it talks about if we add anything that it would be a maximum not to exceed. Is the $86,000 total a maximum not to exceed or, and you're working hourly?
Yes.
Or are we just strictly hourly, that it could go higher or lower?
No, that is the maximum not to exceed amount.
Okay. Then we might note that so that it's evident. Also, I didn't notice a date guaranteeing the services to be provided and go to bid. The way I understood at the last presentation, we have to have the project bid before June?
Yes, that is my understanding also.
So I think our contract with Trans Systems should have in it a clause that all bidding will be achieved prior to the June deadline.
Yeah, that's fine. We should, hopefully, we'll beat that by several months, so I have no problem adding that.
Just so we're all on the same page.
Yeah, good. Very good.
Sure.
So on that $86,000, is that a predetermined number by KDOT or...
Well...
How's that number derived from?
No, it's, I mean, there are some standard engineering fees or curves where you can look at the cost of engineering for, compare that to construction. But normally, we sit down and do an hour estimate for the services required to do that job. And we always like to check to see if our fees are in that customary range. But to say it's predetermined by KDOT, no, but they would review it, they do review it, and they will tell you if they feel that that fee is out of line.
Other questions?
No, those are the two that I had.
Gary? All right, so then we need a motion then to approve the engineering agreement with Trans Systems for the CLINK project from Penn to Chestnut to Oak.
With the changes noted.
With the changes noted, yeah.
So moved.
Okay. Would there be a second?
I'll second the motion.
Second. Did you get that, Jan?
Yep.
With the changes noted?
With the changes noted.
With the changes noted. Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Item K is next. It says, "Consider modifying the recommendation on funding CLINK project on Penn Avenue from Chestnut to Oak and the downtown street repair at the intersection of Penn and Laurel." Jan?
Yeah, we'll look at both of these projects. You should have a copy of a memo in your packet. For the CLINK, when we brought it to you last week, we recommended taking that out of economic development, but we did not have a breakdown of the city's portion that related to ADA work. And so what I am recommending is that the portion that is related to ADA, that is the city share, is taken out of a special use sales tax for ADA improvements, which is $132,500. And that way, what comes out of the Economic Development and Transportation Fund is the $1,1500 left of the city share. Once again, these are estimates, so it kind of depends on how the project comes in finally, but that's what we would like to do as far as the city portion of funding.
So the February 3rd figures are not correct?
The February 3rd figures, it's the same dollar amount, but when we brought it to you, we did not have a breakout of the ADA piece. And I had mentioned that I would like to take that out of the special use sales tax, but I didn't have those numbers. Shaun's broken those numbers out for us, and so I would like to split it between the ADA. It's the same amount of city share that was presented last meeting, it's just broken out between the two funds.
Well, the estimated ADA cost on the February 3rd letter was $192,500. Was that just a typo then?
That is the total ADA for the project. We were not comfortable paying all ADA for the project out of that when technically some of that ADA is being paid for by KDOT for the participating or for the ramps that do fit in. So we only want to take the portion that's the city share portion out of it. So it's been allocated between the two pieces. So the cost is still $192,500. The city share of that $192,500 is $132,500.
Now, Shaun, on the CLINK project's changing to CLIP, so in the future, are all ADA ramps out of the grant?
That's a good question. My interpretation right now, and this program is new and we'll talk about it more later also, but it's going to be the same as it is now. They'll pay for the ramps that touch the project or that touch the highway, but when we go around the radius and the ramps that aren't technically touching the highway will still be the city share on that program. That program will be pretty similar to how CLINK is interpreted now.
Okay.
And it's a brand-new program, so it may get tweaked or my interpretation may change with time, but right now, it's going to be the same.
Now, that's where, looking at the other item in the agenda dealing with the CLIP project, I saw some exclusions. Thought maybe that was the difference in the prices.
So that project that you're talking about, that replaces CLINK, Shaun, is that?
Correct. It's item L on the agenda. But yes, they are going to basically scrap the CLINK program and the GI program as they stand now, and they've combined those and came up with three different programs. The CLINK's totally gone. There is a CCLIP includes a service preservation, which is SP, a pavement restoration, which is PR, and then a GI, which is a more full-blown modification to the geometrics of an intersection.
Okay. So you may as well stay there because we're going to talk about L.
Okay.
Any questions, further questions from the commission on item K?
Well, we discussed one project. We didn't discuss the downtown street, Penn and Laurel. Do you want to treat them separately or together? It's your choice.
Why don't we approve the CLINK project funding first, then we can do downtown?
Okay.
So I'd make a motion that we approve the CLINK project from Penn to Chestnut to Oak as presented for budget purposes. Would there be a second?
I'll second.
Okay, further discussion? All those in favor then, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, now the downtown street repair, Jan.
The downtown street repair, if you remember, we were looking at the way that they were doing those repairs, and the commission preferred to do the entire width of the street.
Correct.
So that took their project cost to the $113,810. Trans Systems has estimated the ADA cost to be $97,0750 for the repair to the ramps at the corner. And so what we are recommending funding this, of course, we have the $90,000 from the settlement, special use sales tax for that $9,70750. And because we were able to reduce what was coming out of the Economic Development Transportation Fund, that's where I'd like to take that remaining $14,000 from.
That covers the whole...
And that should cover the entire $113,810.
Hundred thirteen thousand, yeah. Okay.
And we've listed $400,000 for miscellaneous projects in the Economic Development Transportation Fund for this year.
Yes, and that would...
So right now, that's all we would be, we'd still have a little under $300,000...
Yes.
For miscellaneous projects.
Yes.
Okay. All right, other questions? Okay. We entertain a motion then that we fund the downtown street repair, Penn and Laurel, as presented by the city.
Was that a motion or you're asking for it?
No, you're...
So moved.
And I'll second the motion.
Get it? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. Now we're ready for L, Shaun, and this is, "Consider submitting an application or applications for the 2019-2020 City Connecting Link Improvement Program formerly known as CLINK." Shaun?
Right, so KDOT's modified their program. It now consists of three things, the SP, the PR, and the GI. They've sent out a call for projects, their applications, it's due March 17th. So we basically sit down with city staff and came up with a project in each category. You may wish to apply for none, you may apply for them all, or you may want to modify some of these, but they're just basically to start the discussion. And again, they're due March 17th, so there's time to do whatever you want to do, really. So the first one that Kelly has up, I assume this is the way it's in their packet, Kelly?
Yes.
Okay, so that's West Main from 9th to 10th. That project was, I guess, first brainstorm several years ago when we had to consider patching that area between 9th and 10th. The pavement itself has failed. So we had had some discussions with KDOT about, rather than doing another mill and overlay there, about doing a full-depth replacement on that block. And for it to qualify for geometric improvement funding, KDOT felt we needed to add the sweeping right turn lane. So that's...
Which is right nearby where that convenience store used to be?
Correct, correct. So that's why it's such an expensive project. It's full-depth replacement. And then to qualify for funding, those initial discussions with KDOT were to add that turn lane. So we've broken out the total cost of 1.2 million, and there's a city share, and then there's a KDOT share. The good thing about the new programs are they boosted the GI up to a million-dollar max grant and the PR up to a million-dollar max grant. And of eligible costs, those are now 90-10 split. So this one, when you get into the right-of-way and other issues, a lot of those costs are ineligible, so that's why this, we haven't hit the maximum KDOT share, but the city share is higher. So there's that project hanging out there. The next one?
On that one, a question. Were you doing the geometric going north? Have you included money for property acquisition there on the corner in the budget or is...
We did. We, when we estimate for right-of-way acquisition, it's really difficult, but we included kind of a higher cost per square foot for the actual right-of-way we need. Sometimes when you get into projects like this, you end up having to buy the whole property. So it, there's a budget in there. I'm not certain it's enough to do a full purchase should that be required.
And the state doesn't help with that part?
Correct.
That's all on city?
Correct.
I mean, we got hammered on that last time.
Correct.
Well, looking at the drawing, it looks like, is that the canopy or is that the building in your aerial?
Must be the canopy.
It's cut off.
Okay. I took it as the building at first and I thought...
Yeah, the building's set way back in the corner there.
Yeah, the darker square is building, okay.
That seems like a lot of money for one block, basically.
Yes, it does. We, you know, we talked about this with city staff. I mean, I can certainly discuss with KDOT if their feeling is the same way. If it qualifies for GI, do we have to do that sweeping right turn lane or can we go in and do something less? And it might be that, I mean, this call for projects is for fiscal year 2019 and 2020. I don't know, unfortunately, how those are going to be awarded, you know, what project and what year. But, I mean, there will be another call for projects at some point, too, if this isn't...
It's a big, it's much higher cost because of that full-depth replacement.
Correct.
Which is, I'm curious about, does KDOT determine that or do we determine that?
No, it's, that block, we really would recommend it for full-depth replacement. There's several, we milled and overlaid that in a CLINK project a few years ago, and the next year, the underlying joints in the concrete blew out, three or four of them blew out. So there's not even a big patch we could do. It's really, that whole block is just disintegrated. The concrete underneath, it's disintegrating, like the old West Main that we did full-depth replacement on. This blocks a few years behind that, really.
Didn't you have trouble when you came east of the 10th Street intersection, finding good concrete to tie in?
Yes.
The project?
Yes, that intersection, when we replaced it, as Leonard described, we could tell that that concrete was in horrible shape, so. So it's, the full-depth replacement really needs to happen. I wouldn't recommend doing another mill and overlay. To me, the question is, will that, would that sweeping right turn lane, is that really still a requirement from KDOT to do the program?
Trucks coming, going west on 160 now, they're going to turn at 6th Street, aren't they?
Yeah, that's, I mean, it's debatable, which way do the trucks go? I don't have, Kelly asked if we had counts on that, and I don't, I can't, I can't give you numbers on what percentage of trucks go 10th or what.
But you did say you had traffic counters. How quickly did we figure that out?
We can. We can probably put those out within the next few weeks if it's something you're wanting to know rapidly.
Yeah, to do that intersection at 6th and Main and this one also, just to kind of see where they're turning.
Isn't 6th Street to Chestnut, is it marked as 160 to 75 or...
What, do you know?
It used to be, I don't think it is anymore.
It's not.
I don't think it is anymore.
A lot of it just depends on where their GPS tells them to go, honestly. We're finding that, because a lot of them will come into town, they shoot down Taylor over to Peter Pan and a lot of big trucks are doing that because their GPS is routing them that way.
I've seen a lot of trucks turn north right there many times.
Well, that's one of those deals to where it's not going to get cheaper, so.
One thing, it would be easier on 6th and Chestnut to prohibit truck traffic. If we do the geometric here, try and restrict the truck traffic at 6th and Main. I think that's why the pylons are out there to kind of control vehicles, cars coming up beside a semi and turning there.
So maybe we need to do a better job of directing them north at that point?
If we're going to do the geometric, it'd make a lot more sense.
More sense.
Because this is going to be concrete, and then we got concrete going north to the other Chestnut geometric we just did. So it'd keep on a better base, better road conditions, and consolidate the traffic on a better route than going to the 6th and Chestnut intersection. Again, the heavy trucks turning and rolling the asphalt or, you know, turning on the concrete is going to be much more durable to our streets.
So that project, again, they're not due till March 17th, so...
So we can do a little analysis on that?
Yes, if you'd like, of course, to put counters out, if you, or any other information you want.
It would.
Okay. West Main?
This one goes from east of Peter Pan, about 300 feet, then west to the city limits. It's asphalt... It's asphalt that's badly rutted and cracked, and it's a little bit, as you can see, it fits better in the KDOT program, where the city share isn't quite as high. But it is basically a mill and overlay with some patching.
That's about 2,000 linear feet, you say?
Yes.
Of just asphalt?
Yes, yes. And then, the next one was?
On this project, we're, it's part of the corridor access management. Is there funds available in that that, can we apply at the same time, or do you know if the access management plan is a different schedule of submitting requests for?
My understanding, I'll have to ask to make certain, but my understanding is that's more of an open-ended type of application, where if you have a, you know, have entrances or some other accesses, that you have a project to modify them, that they would consider an application. So, I think it's a different, open-ended schedule, but I can double-check on that.
I wonder, with that, with the intersection, again, we've got concrete up to Peter Pan, don't we, from West Main?
Yeah, this, a portion of this, I think, has been overlaid previously over concrete, but, so it's asphalt on the surface, but concrete underneath.
But farther east, if we could go and get the money from corridor access management plan and go concrete instead of asphalt, it'd be a lot better surface through the intersection where we've got Walmart trucks turning, and then with the GPS bypassing on Peter Pan, it might be another avenue for funding that could give us a better road bid. Maybe, is it possible to check out both sources of funding?
Yeah, we can do that. Yeah, we should be able to do that, just do it in the next week or so, get an answer on the probability of getting some of those funded.
With the corridor access management plan, I think alleys are also funded through that?
They can be, yes.
We've got the alleys behind Mikey's Taco and Independence Family Medicine that are really in poor condition, that if we could get funding to redo those from the access management plan money, that could really help offset some of our costs.
It's a great idea.
Yeah, it is. With that access management plan, we need to get some definitions on what change of use is, because I've received some calls from some vendors out there concerned about what that does. And we probably need to have some sort of meeting with them, some sort of hearing, I don't know what you call it, Sean, but to discuss those issues, because they're legitimate from what they've explained to me.
Okay.
And I know we don't have an agreement with them, but we need to explore what the possibilities are, so that, you know, we've got to be sure we don't jeopardize anybody's business on West Main, is my point. And, for that point, for that matter, on North on Penn 2, like Mikey's and around there, so.
I can have that discussion with them, same time to set up a meeting with the city.
That's kind of what I was hoping, is be able to maybe address some of that altogether.
One of the public hearings we had, I asked about the change of use. The way I understood, it's if a business closes or sells, and they change the use of the store, then the entrances would be modified. There's a couple on North Penn that are pretty critical, and those were pointed out at the public hearing. And the engineer with KDOT, I think it was one of the engineers from Topeka had mentioned, in those applications, the business would have to shut down to constitute a change of use, and then the entrance would have to be modified to provide a greater distance from the, from Penn Avenue.
We just need to have a, I mean, a definition prepared, you know, so that we understand what it is, because the drawings now say proposed. Is it, what did the drawings say on that access plan?
Oh, it's a concept.
Yeah, a concept, yeah, a concept drawings, that's right.
But the agreement has not been signed.
Right.
But we took the money to...
Well, I think we can have a discussion with them. I mean, I think we need to have a, we better have a discussion with them.
Clarify.
Yeah, nail down, yeah.
Yeah, I'll see what I can set up with KDOT and with Kelly.
Then the last one there, Sean, Chestnut from Penn to 9th.
This one was actually one that we've kind of planned on applying for CLINK for several years, for several years. So, if you look at it, it's been over 10 years since it was overlaid, and it's just, it's at the point it needs done, so. It's, again, it's one that's, doesn't have as large a city share either, just the way the new KDOT program falls.
Questions there?
On, I get, this goes on into, assuming we get the grants, in our, our funding part, one of the things we ran into, I guess, on the CLINK project that's coming up from Chestnut to Oak, was whether we had the money available for our part. If these are off to 2019 and 2020, now's the time that we need to make sure that when we get the grants, we have the money. Is this, what we had, the five mil increase was relating to capital expenditures. I think we talked about streets and vehicle, firetruck, and things in that realm. You know, I think we'd be much better, when we get the grant, if we knew we had the money there, or we start accumulating now to match this, plus a little for property acquisition for right-of-way, if we need to.
Agreed. That, that five mil increase, I think, was for, I mean, we have a list of sidewalks that people have been complaining about. It's for street repairs, because citizens are complaining about street repairs. And then, of course, the reserves for acquisition of large equipment, because we know, you know, fire engines have been something that's kind of looming out there in the budget that need to be purchased. So, that's, this is exactly what it's available for, and for you gentlemen to determine that.
So, we're looking at, with our part, about $440,000. Well, in 2019, will we have enough accumulated to satisfy that, or are we going to have to look at additional funding from other sources, too, within our budget?
Well, you've added that $250,000 this year, and if you keep it there, and you don't spend it on anything else, yes, you should absolutely be fine.
Okay.
I mean, I think the concern that, that I saw when I saw that 1.2 million dollar project is, we have a lot of things, I mean, we have trainer coming in, trying to set some priorities within the city.
Yeah.
And $300,000 compared to 1.2 doesn't sound like a lot, but I mean, it's a tough thing to say by March 17th, when you haven't heard back from that committee yet, what you're willing to apply for, because it will be like this CLINK that we just recently had come before you, where we say, if we don't use it, we lose it. And not only do we lose the funds, but we've also broken our relationship, and we may not get funds for a while. And pay in what, what they pay, you absolutely want to have those funds available to you.
See, I think that's one of the things that the committee can help us determine, so what are the funding possibilities going forward? And so, that, this is the kind of information that is vital for them to have in front of them, so that, you know, you keep an eye on the big picture, and not just one little or some projects there that allow, they become cherry-picking, for lack of a term.
The $250,000 that you raised this year has not been tagged or earmarked for anything yet, so if you want to earmark it for projects in the future, go ahead and do that.
And, you know, it doesn't all have to go at one time, but if we know that by 2019, we're going to need X number of dollars, we should have it there, because like you said, KDOT is very generous to the City of Independence. And we want to have our part, and we want to respect them, and let them know how we appreciate their money in improving our roadways through, through the town, and it just...
And this should be over two years, so...
Yeah, I mean, you have some time.
Yeah, we have some time to do some proper planning.
And I'm, you know, I'm, I'm not sure how KDOT works, but I'm pretty sure you probably won't get all three of them in the same year, so you will even have to, I mean, if they award them over multiple years, you have time then to work with that, too.
And the way the state funding's going, there may not be any money there. Okay. Other questions, comments? So, we need to do some...
We'll need direction if you want applications prepared for these three projects.
They look good to me. I mean, there are things we're going to have to do, and may as well have help from the state. I mean, our portion's sizable, but it's sure, sure nice to have state money, too. So, I think we'll go for it.
Yeah, I think we need to go ahead on the CLINK projects, apply what we can, and then also investigate the corridor access management plan funding, to see that we can, you know, maybe if one's not funded in one area, we can get it, but we, we've got to stay on top of our roads, so we don't end up with another West Main situation. And you look at the repairs that were done on West Main, east of 10th, and that one block to 9th Street, they're already failing. So, that needs to be a priority.
Okay. Gary, thoughts?
I, I like it when the state pays 90% better, but I'll take 75% too.
Okay, same, same with me. So, do we need a motion, Sean, or do you, is that?
I think it would be good to get a motion, so that...
Do we proceed with the grant applications?
Repair applications.
Okay. Would there be a motion, then, that we give transit systems the permission, then, to proceed with those three projects as they're listed?
I make a motion that we proceed with preparation of applications for the 2019-2020 City Connecting Link Improvement Program.
I'll second.
All right, you got that, Jan? That would be the West Main, 9th to 10th, Peter Pan, West Main, yeah, Chestnut, okay. All right, all those in favor, then, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item N, M, it says, "Consider an agreement between Kansas State Historical Preservation Officer regarding performance of project reviews under KSA 75-2724 as amended." Mr. Brown, you are...
Yes, thank you. First, let me tell you who we are. Nearly 15 years ago, the City Commission enacted an ordinance which stated that the present and future economic and general welfare of the people of the city is generally founded on the contributions of the past manifested in district sites and buildings, and further finds that many historic properties have been lost through demolition and destructive rehabilitation, notwithstanding the feasibility of preserving and continuing the use of such properties. And therefore, they created the Independence Historic Preservation Commission. And this commission has seven individuals who are appointed by the mayor for three-year terms, all of whom must have demonstrated interest, knowledge, training in the fields related to preservation, including history, architecture, archaeology, planning, real estate law, finance, building, trades, and design. And not less than three of the appointees must be composed of people who are in those professions professionally. Currently, our commission consists of Tim Emmert, who's an attorney, Tim Ragland, who's an artist, Tim Haynes, who runs the Fab Lab at the college, Tom Hoferd, who is an archaeologist, Sean Clapp, who's an architect, Mark Easter, who's an engineer, and myself from history. So, now let me tell you with that background what we're here for. And we are asking the city to enter into an agreement with the State Historical Society that, and it's a template that Jeff prepared for our commission about a year and a half ago, given to him by the state. That is the agreement that they have signed with 11 other cities in Kansas, which basically would give the local preservation commission the authority to, and the quote is in paragraph one, "to perform all the responsibilities of the State Historic Preservation Office." So, the way it is now, anytime there is a building permit for, issued in the downtown historic district, or any other structure which is on the state or national register, not in the downtown, like the middle school, then every view must be done by the State Historical Society in Topeka. If you agree with this, if you make the agreement with the city and the state also signs it, then those reviews would be done by the local commission. And so, the things that you need to know to consider this is, all of our commission would be required to go through a 3R training that the State Historical Society would come to Independence and conduct, and they've done this before. Furthermore, the city staff is encouraged to attend, city commissioners are encouraged to attend. It's free, but, but it would be done by the, by the state. The second thing is that the Secretary of Interior standards for the treatment of historic properties must be used as the basis for our decisions. That's the same standards that the state uses, so we're not just shooting from the hip, "Yeah, that looks good," or, "No, we don't like that." We would have to use those standards. We may, at any time, request the assistance of the State Preservation Office if we think it's too complex, if we have a vested interest, if simply we don't want to make the decision, we can transfer it back to the state. And then, finally, the agreement is for five years. It is renewable, and it's also revocable. If we are not performing the task as we should, they can withdraw us from that agreement.
They the state?
They the state, yes. And so, our local commission has given this a lot of thought and discussion. We've been in existence for about 15 years, and we've worked very successfully with the state on many, many projects. And before, and they're, they're not just going to throw us out of the nest, before they would sign the agreement, they would have us do two or three real projects here in Independence in real time, to see how we decide, to make sure that we know what we're doing. So, our commission voted unanimously that we would like to pursue this, and have you consider it and sign it if you so desire. And I would be willing to answer any questions you might have.
Will this affect the ability of the downtown building owners to get the tax credits, the state historic tax credits?
Oh, no.
Everything's just the same?
Every, yeah, it's just, instead of sending the review to Topeka, you would send it to our local commission. Yes, everything else is the same, and the guidelines will be the same from the Department of Interior. Tax credits, and, and any thing on the register is eligible for heritage. It's very competitive, I mean, you're going to get it, but...
When that IHPRC ordinance was adopted 15 years ago, it was always the intent for this to occur. We didn't know at that time it was going to take 15 years, but that was always the intent for it to function that way.
The review is, is limited to those that are on the national or state historic register of historic places, is that correct?
Yes, and in the district contributing buildings, although I think the state made a comment at 201 East Main, which is not a contributing building.
That's in historical district, though. That's in historical district, though.
Yes, but there are buildings that are designated contributing to the historic fabric and those that are non-contributing. And for the most part, the jurisdiction is just on the contributing. And there is no longer, the state legislature revoked the environs about three years ago. It used to be that a structure was protected and then a five-hundred-foot radius was also protected, and that is no longer in effect and has not been in effect for about three years. So, yeah, it's just the structures themselves that are on the register or in the district.
Other questions?
How will we get the information to the building owners of the change, the process?
As far as they know, there is no change. I mean, the building permit will trigger a review. And the review will be done by us instead of the state.
The only change is the person doing the actual physical review and inspection. Instead of somebody from Topeka coming down, local people will do it.
I think, I think it's a good idea because it gives us more local control. But, you know, we just did the, we just approved a variance, I guess you'd call it, for the dentist office there on Penn Street. And, you know, there was, we basically overrode that. Isn't that correct? So that she could proceed with that project, right?
I don't know. Did you override it? Or I thought they, I thought the compromise was finally accepted by the state, by the state? It's my understanding that...
How does it work like that? Because that was...
That came to the commission, and they found that there was no feasible alternative, and they override the state's.
So the same, the same process?
The same thing.
Okay, same thing.
And our review is not a decision. It's, it's comment, and it can be overridden by the commission, the same as you could override the state's review.
It seems like a no-brainer to me. We've got more local control, people that care about the downtown.
I think the local control of it is really a good idea. I'm not opposed to, I'm just curious about how it's all gonna, seems like you're taking on more responsibility.
I think we are. That's why it took us fifteen years to say that we really wanna do this.
Which is, I mean, I'm happy for you to do it. That's what it needs to be.
I think if you approve it, it doesn't guarantee the state will. I think they will, but they may not, so it's not a done deal.
Well, I understand that. And then we have final say, I understand.
Yeah, we'll go through this training.
I think the state has final say.
Rather not, for the variance part of it.
Oh, no, yeah, I'm talking about the agreement, signing the agreement.
Okay, I, okay.
We'll have to pass the final muster.
Yeah.
The agreement just complies and fits into what's allowed by statute. Statute still outlines some ways to appeal a ruling that will still be applicable, only dealing with the local commission, won't it?
Right.
Yeah, those procedures aren't changed. This is just purely the initial inspection and review and recommendation.
Well, I think our local folks would much rather deal with Ken and his group.
I think it would be much better to have this administered at a local level instead of state. The thing that I see would be beneficial, the building permit stage is a little late. If you've started, if you're gonna do drawings and redesign and construction detailing, notice to the building owner so that you could get involved at the first part would help. That's gonna be difficult getting the information out, but it would be really helpful to the building owners to see that input early. And I see that as, by the local commission having that authority, now you can interact a lot closer with building owners on educating the contributing buildings, but also maybe influencing some of the others to change details or bring in compatible features that would enhance historic significance and...
And we published a brochure, in fact, Kelly really dressed it up with pictures like of the Penny's Building before and after, of things that should be done, should not be done, can be done, can't be done. And, you know, and it says at the very beginning, "Consider this before you bring in your contractors."
I think it's a great, great step to bring under our jurisdiction.
Good with them. So then we'd need a motion then. Any further questions for Ken before? We good? All right, so then we need to consider, we need a motion then to consider the agreement between the Kansas State Historical Preservation Officer regarding amending the performance of project view under KSH, KSA seventy-five twenty-seven twenty-four as amended. Would that be, I'll make that motion. So we don't have to go through that.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion by anybody? Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Item N is next, and that's, "Consider providing direction to staff regarding amending the ordinance establishing a system development charge and amending ordinances related to fees established in Appendix D for a system development charge, water connection fee and sewer connection." Kelly?
Staff met with the city attorney and Terry and Jen and David and I, and we reviewed this. It's, we recommend taking out the dwelling unit and tying it all to meter size and then lowering the initial cost from a thousand to five hundred for a normal, five-eighths inch meter, which is for a single-family residential house is usually what they have. And then in increasing it by five hundred dollars based on the meter size, so it's not gonna be just for residential or commercial, I mean, it would be applied to anybody regardless based on the size of meter. And so that's what we recommended. We thought it would be easier to administer. They would pay it when they pay for their meter set. This is not what they would pay for their meter. This is the system development fee, but it would be tied to meter size rather than the per-dwelling unit, one that the other one had. And then the ordinance would be much simplified from what we currently have and just be much easier for staff, and then it wouldn't be such a, you know, big hit on a residential development where you may have a larger water user for commercial or industrial, and then they're not paying it. So we thought this would be more fair.
Thoughts?
I like it.
I think it sounds reasonable.
Yeah, it's very enforceable to say that our new assisted living facility needs to pay us twenty-two thousand dollars, I think is outrageous. I think this is a much more fair arrangement. I like it a lot.
Yeah, I think the charge based upon meter size is a much better reflection of actual costs. Now, the SDC is held in reserve for expansion and improvements of the water and sewer system. Is that changed in the ordinance? I think it's called out in the original ordinance that that money is held in reserve strictly for improving or increasing the capacity of the two plants.
The ordinance is not intended to change that at all.
So it would still, so we'll be accumulating money with the development costs so that if increase or modifications of our existing plant exist, then this would be applicable to the assisted living facility. They're gonna be under the new ordinance.
The other one was through their building permits. What we did, since we knew this was an issue, is we issued them a conditional building permit for the dirt work, and we charged them the normal building permit fee, did not charge them the system development fee until we determined how this was gonna be resolved or if it was gonna be resolved. So that's where that's at.
Yeah. It always makes it more difficult to wait till the situation's at hand to deal with an issue. When you read the ordinance relating to hotels and motels, the thought is transient-type environment, doesn't have to pay the SDC because they're not full-time guests, so you're not gonna have that constant load. But in reality, you've got a fluctuating, you can be at capacity most of the time or not, and you're still impacting the size of our treatment facilities or particularly wastewater, how much wastewater has to be treated by demand, so... The meter rate charge will balance this out and take out all the wording referred to exclusions. It'll be uniform for all.
That's what we thought.
So you're looking for direction, is what...
Well, the ordinances have been prepared if you're ready to do it. The city attorney's prepared the ordinances so we can get this going.
Okay. So you're good with them, Jeff?
I believe so. Well, it does away with, like she said, the per-dwelling unit. And I don't think we've ever had occasion to charge a high-unit building before. Came up uncomfortable, and it was determined the exclusionary language was there. And we, I think the city staff brought it to amend it to get them back in, and you didn't wanna do that, and this is consistent with that intent.
Okay, so...
The new, the new ordinance will remove all reference to dwelling units.
The new ordinance is very short.
So you needed two different motions to adopt the two separate ordinances?
Yeah. The new ordinance repeals the old one in its entirety, and this is replacing it.
And the second ordinance sets the fee schedule in Appendix D of the code.
Okay. Anybody wanna make that motion? How, what would be the proper wording there, Summer?
To adopt an ordinance repealing ordinance number four zero eight two codified to City Code Section one oh six dash two six one through one oh six dash two six seven, inclusive in establishing a new systems development charge. That's the first one.
You got all that, didn't you?
So moved.
So it's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second. Okay. All those in favor then, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The second would be an ordinance amending Appendix D of the City Code setting forth the amount of the systems development charge.
Yeah, which is on the right side there. Okay. Just this one here. Okay, I'd make that motion then. Would there be a second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion? This is good work here. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 I like the consistency part of it. Good. Okay. Item O is, "Consider request from an outside city water meter for an existing city water customer at five forty-seven Roosevelt Drive."
The commission previously approved another similar situation, so now we have another property owner, and I think there will be more coming, that are on the same meter that wants split off. So we recommend if you approve that, that we also have them sign a waiver that they are not gonna split off service from that again, because that's where some of these occurred, is they had one meter, so they, somebody wanted to build something and they added on, so they're basically kind of skirting the extension of service policy on some of these. So we wanna make sure they sign a waiver so that isn't, you know, continue anymore.
That sounds reasonable. And this is where we, you know, we were warned about making the exception, so now we have to...
They're getting water from us now, but just not on their own meter.
Now we'll be able to gain revenue.
On the minimum charge, yeah.
With the minimum charge, yeah. That was one question I asked, what happens to the revenue part of it? Okay.
Well, you brought up a point, Kelly, talking about the waiver for them, but what prevents an existing customer from saying, "Hey, shut yours off and share on my meter." We'll just run a line from one. Do we have any policy in city ordinance form that would prohibit that from occurring on existing sets?
You have to remember, they're not in the city, so they're not really under City Code, so it's kinda...
City, inside the city, there's actually a criminal statute that might apply called theft of services. I'd say that might cover it, although we've never done that. There may be something in the utilities code that addresses it.
Well, I can address that. The county has in place in their codes that you cannot do that. They will not issue a building permit now unless they have their own service. So they work with us on that, that's stopping this from happening.
So it's already addressed? Okay, good.
Yeah, these situations are from back in the sixties and seventies.
Okay. Okay. So we'd need a motion then to, each one of these will have to approve separately, correct, Kelly? If there's others that come?
Yeah, whenever they come, you'll have to approve those separately.
Okay. So would there be a motion then to approve the separate water meter being installed at five forty-seven Roosevelt?
I'll make a motion that we install a additional, or a water meter for five forty-seven Roosevelt Drive.
I'll second.
Contingent on the waiver, signing the waiver first.
Condition on the owner of five forty-seven.
Both property owners have to sign it.
Property owner signing a waiver.
Everybody that's currently sharing has to sign it.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So we got that, Jen? Okay. Gary, you second? Okay, so it's been moved and seconded then. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Item P is, for me, because I will not be able to attend the March ninth meeting, and I'd like for us to consider scheduling that for March seventh, which is a Tuesday night. I'm checking with, there's no, there were no hearings scheduled for the ninth, correct?
No, we didn't have any public hearing scheduled for that.
So it's just a matter of moving the date, if so.
Now, there is a...
If not, I mean, if...
There is P and Z in this room on the seventh, so I just wanted to note that.
And so if not, then just be two commissioners here, so, because I won't be here. And I wouldn't be here Wednesday night either, the eighth, so that's why I suggested either the seventh, you could do the sixth.
Leonard, I don't care. Do you?
No, the seventh's fine.
Well, if you do it the seventh, we'll have to, we have P and Z scheduled in this room. We may not have any hearings, though, so it may not be an issue, so. Yeah, we could.
What time's P and Z start?
Same time. But so far, we don't have anything scheduled, so it may not be an issue at all.
What about the sixth? Would that be better?
That's up to staff.
I mean, we'll work with it, whatever you wanna do.
I say the seventh.
Okay.
So since you're honoring my request, which I appreciate, so can somebody make that motion?
I move that we reschedule the March ninth meeting to March seventh.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, been moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. All right, so we're ready for reports, and I think, Jen, you had a report that you wanted to do, a couple of them, on some letters to the editor.
Yes, there were some letters to the editor this weekend that city staff just wanted to address. First, Mr. Ususi wrote a letter addressing his concerns at the city relocating to the former Mercy Hospital building. And Mr. Ususi, I believe, is on the committee to be part of the trainer process, and we just appreciate that his concerns have been brought out and encourage him to bring him up at those meetings, because that's exactly what those meetings are for, is to address everything that we have questions about in the community. And I think the things that he addressed, many citizens have asked those questions, too. One thing that I think hasn't really been made public and just related to the building D is that we did receive five hundred thousand dollars from Mercy for capital projects at the former Mercy Properties. So that money is out there, that might, we have received it, the check has been cashed, the money is in the bank and it's available, but... But that's something that Trainer will have information for the citizens to do when they're making their decision about the future of City Hall. The second letter was from Mr. Royce, a former city clerk, and he wrote a letter concerning the water rate increases that haven't been adopted yet. He did take issue with the fact that I brought up the impact of the water emergency on our budget. I did not mean to imply that the water emergency alone is going to blow our budget, and it sounds like that's something that was taken into account. Something he doesn't mention in his letter is that November is a month that feeds into the sewer averaging rates that are then charged for the next year. And I just want to bring up, two and a half days of no usage lowers your consumption in a billing cycle. Once again, it's not going to reduce the sewer rates by half for everyone that impacts, but it is going to have an impact next year. The reason I brought those up, and I brought up the water sewer rate, is that we adopted a budget last year that I was very clear during the budget process did not cover the expenses. We knew that going into this year, we knew that we intended to revise the budget, we knew that the water rates would need to be adjusted. Unfortunately, the water rate study has been held up because of litigation. We have gotten to the middle of February, we've done nothing to adjust our rates, and we still have a budget that doesn't balance. We made it balanced, cut the expenses back, so it netted out to zero. But next year, we have all kinds of projects in the water department that need to be done that are not funded, and at some point, we're going to have to take some action, or we are going to have trouble in our water system. Mr. Royce did suggest using the million-dollar emergency water fund. That's absolutely a possibility, however, I think it's been clear in our discussions that that is for the emergency situation where our plant fails. One of those examples is the electrical grids going down. If those go down, we've got to move fast and we've got to have cash to do it. It's not because the water upstream was contaminated and we can't pump it through our system. I understand that he and I may have some different views on how this should be handled, but I don't think tapping into those funds right now for something that we saw and we can turn around and react to is a smart idea. My final comment is that Mr. Royce called the water rate increases that have been passed unjustified. I'm sorry he feels that way. I hope he voiced those on all of the water rate increases he signed off on the ordinances in 2011, 12, 13, and 14.
Okay.
Yeah. Something to that. I just want to, I did a little research, looking at water rates in the area, and I put together, in Independence, if you purchase 10,000 gallons of water, you pay $37.15. You go to Coffeyville, that same 10,000 gallons of water costs you $64.64. Art City, $77.65. Parsons, $70.42. Our rates are extremely low, and as you can tell by that graph, have been flatlined for years. As a matter of fact, probably 25 years. I don't know where anybody could say that you have unjustified rate increases. The fact that where they're at is ludicrous.
Well, there was also, what, 10 years, eight years, whatever it was, where there were no rate increases?
Yes.
Isn't that accurate? And so that's kind of like the Fram oil filter commercial, either you pay me now or you pay me later.
Right. And that's what we've come into, it's a payment, you're going to pay me now, because we can't keep operating in this environment.
I think that was the purpose of the rate study, that, you know, you've gone on and you've kept the rates level, and the question to the people is why then? If you don't know if you're making money or losing money, then how can you charge? Just because Coffeyville sets a rate, or you, we can't set our rate based upon what another town does, because we've got to cover our expenses to provide the service. And you can't arbitrarily set a rate and expect to balance a budget, and that's where we're at now. We need the rate study.
I was just giving general examples of rates in the area. I'm not saying our rate needs to be what their rate is.
That's why we need the rate study.
But the cost of doing business is pretty similar from one to the other.
I don't know, we got some pretty good guys out there making our water.
Well, I could also tell you, our guys don't make as much money as any of these other cities too.
You know, it's the time they presented, or, you know, when we did our tour, you could tell that they're devoted to their job and they're concerned.
Very devoted to what they do.
About the quality of our water and doing the best they can. I think that's where, it's the commission's responsibility to look in, to make sure that we, we do what's necessary to cover both aspects. We've got to protect the people with fair charges, and we've got to see that we're generating enough revenue to maintain our systems, too. If we don't do both, we're not doing our job.
Well, we've also been warned, though, the last couple of years in our budget, that the water fund was going down, that we were going to end up with some major issues if it wasn't addressed. And we're going to have to address.
Yeah, when you look at the mitigation plan after the 2007 flood, some of the issues that we're just now talking about correcting were identified at that point. And the question, why are we waiting 10 years? Why has the commission waited 10 years to give staff direction to address those issues? Put stress on finances, on where are you going to get the money? You know, that's, 10 years, we should have been doing something. And, you know, that's where we've failed the staff in directing action to be taken so that we can provide the services.
Yep. And I just will add that.
I'm anxious to see that rate study.
I don't think there's anybody more frustrated with this rate study and that it being tied up in litigation than city staff at this point. It is extremely frustrating.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jen. All right, sales tax report.
I have an unfortunate sales tax report to present. You've seen the numbers, we got just over $150,000 for January, and that is a low number for January, if you look across the board. That came in pretty low. Those would be November receipts.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's not, that's not Christmas.
That's not Christmas. Christmas will be next month. I hope everybody waited till the last minute based on those numbers.
I did.
Did you?
It's all the Christmas bonuses everybody spent money. Okay. Next is the recommendation from the plumbing board to adopt the Uniform Plumbing Code.
We have a little subcommittee, actually, that's been working on some of these building codes, and we're looking at the international family of codes, but the plumbing board would like to stick for the plumbing for the Uniform Plumbing Code. We actually went to one of their meetings, and Leonard attended as well, and visited with them, and they would like for the plumbing part to stay with the Uniform Plumbing Code. They listed several reasons for that, but it's actually more strict. They said everything's contained in one book instead of the international, some of their stuff's in four different books they'd have to get. And so we're trying to work with them. They are having a meeting once a month, and they're going through chapters to see if there's anything that needs to have any exceptions to it when the codes are adopted, so they're working on that. And then we're working on the other side, trying to get some forms redone so that it's easier, the process is easier to come in for a building permit, that there's check sheets so everybody understands exactly what they have to have, there's no surprises. And Leonard's been helping us with that as well. So we are working on that. So just kind of give you an update on that.
Okay. So at some point, we'll be adopting that code?
Yes, and finally getting away from 1997 codes.
Yeah, okay.
So.
Okay, comments, thoughts? Anybody on that? Okay. Bids and quotes, upcoming bids and quotes?
Those are on the website. We're going to be getting quotes for a cemetery mower March 2nd. And then we have all those surplus items for sale. We've gotten several calls for people to come look at different things, and from cities, from hospitals, different things. So we're hoping we get some quotes on that, and those are coming up pretty quick on the 16th, so we're hoping we'll bring back some good news, we hope, on that.
Okay. And then March 4th is the Main Street fundraiser?
Yes, and I sent an email previously, and I just need to know who would like to attend. I don't know if we have enough to do a corporate table or not. If we don't have eight, then we'll just do them by individuals. And then city staff is working on some items, like we did for the chamber, that they can auction off, and other dirty jobs, if you want to apply for that one, try to get that one.
Oh, yeah. Okay. So we need to let you know pretty soon if we're going to be able to attend?
Yes, that would be good, just so that I know if we need to get a corporate table or not.
Yeah, we'll attend.
Okay.
I told you yesterday, I think we can go.
So that's half a table, I mean, no? Okay. All righty. And then also, right before I came here, I actually got a call from Andy Pitts, and we have an update on the study. And he's, he's working on the programming, and he's, wants to go through our capital projects, he's going to meet with staff to make sure we're not missing anything. And then he wants to set out some kickoff meetings and things, and he gave me some dates to work with the committee members to see if they're available, those dates. And so I'm going to be starting on, working on that pretty quick to get those meetings set up.
Okay. And what were proposed dates?
When I got off the phone with him, he said February 16th and March 7th. And I'm going to contact them to see, tomorrow, to see if they're available.
Several people had indicated they couldn't meet next week, but they could meet.
Yeah, and we do have one member that already has said that they're not available the one day, but that's one day he can come down, so we're trying to see if maybe they could be available by speakerphone, or if he could call them and catch them up, because it's more of just a kickoff, kind of explain the process, that first meeting. So we're going to try to work through those. And with 15 people, you're going to have some, it's going to be really hard to get everybody at every meeting, but we're going to try.
Yeah, I was going to say, it'd be hard to match schedules all the time, but.
If it's just a kickoff meeting, could we possibly have Mr. McHugh record it, and then the others could watch it? Get caught up if they can make it?
Yes, we could, and I haven't talked to him yet, so I don't know, there just may be one that can't go, I don't know.
Yeah, just hardly have 15 people together on the same night.
Right. And, you know, we might be able to do Skype or something, too, so.
That's true. And then the process, you know, in our discussions with Mr. Trainer, it was going to, or Andrew Pitts, there was going to be like a 60-day process, so we're, at that time, then, committee members can set different dates to continue to meet.
Well, and that's what, that kickoff meeting, I think he's going to try to get some feedback and to, he's hoping he can set a certain, you know, date, like a second or fourth, whatever, so that everybody, it's calendared in, and everybody can kind of plan on it, so.
Then set at least one meeting, hopefully more than one, with the community at large.
Yes, and he talked about that, too. In fact, he wants me to put that on the next agenda to discuss when we can schedule that town hall meeting. But he kind of wanted to have the first meeting with them first to kind of get started, and then he's going to ask us to do that, bring that back, so you guys can set that town hall meeting, and we can publicize it and get it out so people can plan to attend.
Okay. All right, other questions or thoughts on that?
No, I don't.
That's good. I'm anxious to get that going, I would like to, that's important for budgeting, and as we talked about before, I think it's important, too, that we have that in place by the time we get a new city manager in place, too. And a quick report on that is, is that the ads are out for the city manager. They will run, applications will be accepted through March 3. At that time, then, we will have a review process, and then from that process, then the commission will get together and decide, folks, we want to interview, bring in, bring into interview. And one of these times here in the near future, we'll have to have a discussion about how, because I'd like to involve the community in that as much as we can, have little subcommittees that meet with the prospective candidates, and actually, they'd be the finalists, and let the community have some input into that. Of course, we'd make the final decision on it, and then, you know, give them a little rubric that they can use. That would be, you know, they'd give us our comments, we'd consider them, and make our decisions based upon our impressions and then the community's impressions. Thoughts? Hopefully, hopefully, middle of May, first of June, we have a new city manager in place. That's the goal. Okay? All right. Commission comments. While we got city board minutes.
That's just an FYI.
You want us to do that one before we talked about it?
Yes. I have a note on that one.
If you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Do it, Kelly.
Yeah, go ahead.
City staff got a letter from one of the parties interested in Building D, which can be characterized as a request for due diligence information, and city staff really needs guidance from you three guys. Are you wanting them to move forward with all these offers as though it's going to be sold? Are you wanting to wait and see what the committee recommends? The kind of request we got is typically done after you have a contract, and then the due diligence occurs, and the buyer decides whether they can really swing it or not. There's no contract. There's no price been offered by this particular gentleman. We don't know what he's thinking, so I know you want to give the committee all the options, but I think city staff just wants some guidance from you. We don't want to just ignore the letter, we'd like to respond to it, and maybe say, let's wait and see what the committee recommends, or it is a very time-consuming task to put together this type of information, though.
Thoughts from the commission?
Well, I think now with the search for city managers, you mentioned in your memo that the staff is consumed with a lot of extra activities, of maybe just acknowledging receipt of the letter and his request, and say it'll be 30 or 60 days before we can really have time to devote, to do that. We have to, you know, take care of the urgent issues, not that that's not important, but we need to make sure all the daily business items are taken care of, and then we'll be glad to look at it later after we deal with some of these other.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I think he's just concerned that we've met with somebody else, and that he wants to make sure we don't sell it to somebody else before he gets a fair shot at it, which, of course, we would not do. But I don't think there's any need to respond to that right now, other than just acknowledge it and let him know we'll get with him when we're, when we're ready to do so.
Well, I think it's fair that for the committee to do their work, I think that it's fair for them to know what kind of potential price there is there that, whether or not it, you know, if they want to get it for a half a million dollars or a million bucks, then I'm not really interested in doing that, because I think the cost for moving and doing other work would maybe taint the, or make the committee think differently. What I'm hoping is, is that all the committee members come in there and they're very open-minded, and that they'll look at the facts and figures without any preconceived notions, and then they will make, make decisions based upon what's best for the whole community, based upon financials, the whole, you know, the whole gamut of information there. So, I mean, a letter of intent normally includes a price, isn't that correct, Jen?
It, you know, or at least an idea of, the party should have an idea of where they're headed. I don't think we do with this gentleman.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's, and I think it's a critical piece of information so that the committee can do their work. That's what we're entrusting the community to do, and I trust them to make the good, a really good decision for us. I trust that.
Maybe when we respond, we could suggest to him that it wouldn't hurt if he would give us an idea of what price he was thinking about without committing himself to it.
Right.
And I imagine his response could be that I need to see operating expenses and costs And I imagine his response could be that I need to see operating expenses and costs that I, to make his evaluation, too. Some of it's going to tie hand in hand, but, you know, maybe he could give a price range, but, you know, to go into a lot of detail with the concern of staff's time now to devote to getting and executing that list, I think it's something that, you know, can wait.
How much time would that take staff to do that?
It's going to take quite a while. We figured, what, about a week's worth of work or so, and plus, some of it that he asked for, we don't even think we can give him.
Can't even answer that, right.
So, I mean, if maybe Jeff could talk to him, if he could even give Jeff kind of a ballpark and let you guys know, to see if it's even worth, I mean, it's up to you guys to pursue.
We'll respond to him, Jeff. No, I'm sorry. I said, we can respond to him, in knowledge that we've got that. Are you good with that? Leonard, you good with that?
Yeah.
Do you want to also ask him for a price, or?
I think if we suggest to him that it wouldn't hurt his efforts if he would give us what he's thinking about.
Yeah, because it would be helpful if the committee knew at least a range.
A range, sure would. Yeah, range, yeah.
And it wouldn't be, he wouldn't, you know, it could be where he could, he's not committed to it, as far as, you know, he hasn't signed a contract or anything, just a proposal, so...
Okay. All right. There's nothing else on that, so city board minutes, we've already talked about. Commission comments? Gary, you have something for them? Leonard, you got?
Did you? Now, the only thing I had was, you know, with looking at our budget and our concerns, that looking where we had budgeted for utilities and expenses on Building D, and then the move we had to make, how's that going to impact our budget this coming year? You know, I think some of the figures we had for utilities are quite a bit lower than what we're actually incurring, and I think when we first talked about Building D, we talked like $150,000 was going to be the shortfall that was going to come out of Memorial Hall Historic Tax Credit money. Well, where are we? And where are we going to be at the end of 2017? With now, you know, we've only got four months of actual occupied utilities in the building, and radiology was only, or imaging was only from July, so for a full year, we're going to look at possible significant utility increase over this in 2017. Where's the money going to come from? You know, are we going to have to start shifting some purchases, or just where? I think it's something that we need to look at now, to see if we've got a problem, so that we can do something before it's a major problem, or is a problem.
Well, we had brought to you previously, you know, with Steve Mankin, with building system controls, that with those modifications, it could reduce those utility bills by as much as two-thirds. We have $500,000 of Mercy money, not taxpayer money, sitting in the bank, we could use that would pay to make those upgrades, and going forward would save money on those utility bills.
In the agreements with Mercy, the $500,000 was limited to fire EMS services in that building.
Well, it was limited to the, it was limited to the building, and it had some language in there about, if fire and EMS is contained in that building, then that could be an approved use, and I could check with Mercy and verify that, but that would be a good use of those funds to make it affordable, and then if they decided to sell it, it would also make it more marketable.
And that's something we have to have our report, our committee to look at.
I mean, our committee, that's something that the committee can't...
But just every month, like you said, that goes by, you're incurring more and more utilities, so longer you wait.
What he's talking about is a new power plant, and also then, your coils are going to have to change in every air handling unit in the building.
Yeah.
Your valves, your controls, you can't convert steam to water. You're looking at significant costs to do that, so...
Well, he gave us a ballpark cost, and the amount from Mercy was enough to cover those, according to what he told us.
Well, that wasn't shared with us, but I think we need to look at our utilities now, ahead of time, before it becomes an issue that we get a...
Right. We agree.
An active...
Yeah. So do you want me to check with Mercy to see if that would be an approved use of those funds?
Well, I think we, first, we need to see where we are budget right now. If we're not going to have an issue with our budget, if we can do it with what we've got allocated for those items, then we don't need to do anything. I'd hate to go in and modify a system that we don't know what our committee's going to come back with findings. We don't know what Trainer's going to say on space requirements, we don't know, you know?
Well, correct.
Operating costs, long-term, all the features that Trainer talked about. I, in his proposal, I think to go in and modify now is premature, but it's not premature to see how much it's going to impact our budget this year.
But if we don't utilize that money for that building while fire and EMS is there, there's a chance we may have to return that money.
Well, if we haven't spent it, then we haven't lost anything.
Well, but we have it in the bank, if they ask for it back, because we're not going to use the building, I mean, that is a potential, and if you utilize it to, you know, upgrade the system, so your utilities go down two-thirds, then that's going to save the city money paying those utilities going forward.
Yeah, I think where we're at now...
I mean, it's just something to think about.
Right, I think where we're at now is...
Did you have something to say? I keep hearing comments over there.
I think we need to look at our budget.
We were just asking each other questions.
Oh, well, it's just very loud, and I'm trying to hear commissioner's comment.
I think just what my initial comment was, is we need, I think we need to look to see where we are.
Exactly.
First, in our budget from closing out 2016, but going forward in 2017, if those could be put together.
But do you think it would be useful to visit with Mercy to see what those approved uses were?
I think any information that you can get that would aid the committee in their decision.
Okay, so that's okay to do that?
That's my opinion.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that's right.
Any information that they can provide that helps people make, information is powerful, and I think any information that can be provided would be very beneficial to committee members.
Okay, I'll see what I can find out and report back.
Okay. All right. Okay. I don't see anything from public concerns, then. We do have three executive sessions that I mentioned earlier. Which one do we want to do first? Does it make any difference?
I'd do Sean's first.
Sean's, with the acquisition of real estate. How long you think we need? Sean?
Ten minutes.
Ten? Okay. And the executive session will be commissioners, Kelly, Sean, Jeff.
Yes.
Anybody else?
No.
Is that good? Okay, so I need a motion then to go into executive session for 10 minutes for the acquisition of real estate.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We'll be back in...
7:18.
7:18, yeah. All right, we're back in session. Our next executive session will be attorney-client privilege. How long do we need, Jeff?
No longer than the longer we stay.
Ten minutes?
Ten.
Ten?
Yeah, less than a minute.
Okay, so Jeff, commissions, and Kelly.
Sure.
Okay, and so I'd make a motion, we go into executive session for 10 minutes for attorney client privilege, including Kelly, assistant city manager, city attorney, and the commission. Would there be a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we're back in open session, and our last executive session will be non-elected personnel, and it'll be for 10 minutes. I'd like Jeff and the commission to attend this one, so I would make a motion that we go into executive session for 10 minutes for non-elected personnel.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. We are back in session, and there will be no action, so I would entertain a motion then that we adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
So second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And signing our papers and going home.
You're right.
Thank you.
Thank you.